All right, we'll convene as the zoning and land use commission. We will have the prayer by myself and we will have the pledge by Mr. Sudier.
So Father God, we just thank you for every single person in this room, Father God, and we just actually continue to keep Terrebonne Parish in a bubble, Father God, through a storm season and just guide our steps, guide the words that we speak, Father God, and let us tonight just glorify you with everything we do. In Jesus mighty name, we pray, amen.
All right, Ms. Becky, roll call.
Mr. Michael Billiat. Mr. Terry Gold. Mr. Robbie Liner.
Here.
Mr. Clarence McGuire. Mrs. Angel Poinson. Mr. Dan Rogers. Mr. Trevion Smith. Mr. Barry Sudier. Mr. Wayne Thibodeau. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Becky. See conflict disclosure. I remind the commissioners that anytime tonight a conflict of interest exists, arises, or is recognized as to any issue during this meeting, he or she should immediately disclose it and to recuse himself or herself from participating in debate, discussion, and voting on this matter. Does any member have anything to disclose at this time? Approval of the minutes, D, approval of the minutes of the zoning and land use commission for regular meeting of February twentieth, twenty twenty-five? I have a motion by Mr. Rogers. A second by Mr. Gold, all approved, aye? All opposed, nay? So motion passes. Communication.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have one. It pertains to item G one. It's dated Thursday, March twentieth, twenty twenty-five. This is an email. Chris, good afternoon. As you know, our project for the new Imperial Terrace multifamily development is currently on the agenda for tonight's planning commission meeting to review our application for planned building group approval. Following your discussion on the phone with Joe Safiati earlier today, we are formally requesting this discussion be pushed back to the April seventeenth meeting to make sure we have addressed all the concerns of the public. Please let us know if this is acceptable and if you need anything else from us to ensure we are on the agenda for next month. Thanks, Aaron Bodan.
Okay. Need a motion?
Motion to table as per the developer's request.
A motion by Mr. Sudier, a second by Mr. Rogers, all approved, aye? All opposed, nay? So motion passes.
That's the only one.
Yes, sir. So F, public hearing, rezoning from R one, single-family residential to R two, two-family residential, one nine six Peachtree Street, Judy Carter is the applicant. If you, yes ma'am, if you want to come to the mic and just state your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Judy H. Carter. Live right now at one eighty-two Ackland Avenue, Hummer, Louisiana. My primary address is five thirteen Rose Long Avenue, Hummer, Louisiana.
Okay, and what are you here for tonight?
I'm here to trying to get my property rezoned to be able to put a trailer on there on Peachtree Street.
Yes, ma'am.
At one ninety-six.
Okay, that's perfect. And I'll just ask you to step to the side. We're going to go ahead and open it to the public on this matter. Go on to the public one time on this matter. Yes, sir? If you just want to step to the side, ma'am. Sir, come up if you just want to state your name and address first and then your question.
Uh, Law Billiat, one ninety-nine Peachtree.
Okay, yes. You object? Okay. All right. Is there a reason?
Yeah, uh, bring the value down in the neighborhood.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. All right, ma'am, you can step back up. Anyone else? One wants public, two times public, three times public? Motion by Mr. Thibodeau, a second by Mr. Rogers, all approved, aye? All opposed, nay? Motion passes. That's only to vote to close the public hearing. Administration.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a rezone from R one to R two for the purpose of placing a mobile home on the property. The zoning ordinance states in order to rezone property, one of the following conditions must apply. One, error. Two, change in conditions. Three, increase in need for sites for business or industry, or four subdivision of land. Applicant and staff agree the application fits under item two. Changing conditions due to the increasing need for affordable housing. The subject property is abutting in existing R two districts, so the request is exempt from the minimum size requirement. Prior to placement of a mobile home, a special exception for the board of adjustment is required. If it's approved. The applicant was made aware that due to the size of the property, seventy-eight by sixty-two, a standard-sized mobile home may not meet the required setbacks for an R two zone lot, which would also require approval of a structure variance. All public notice requirements have been met and staff didn't receive any calls regarding the request. Staff recommends approval.
Okay. Any commissioner comments? Ma'am, I do have a question. Is this going to be for your personal home? Or is it something, is it an investment? Okay. All right. Commissioner comments? Or a motion?
Yes, sir. There's some further, I guess I'll just say south. And then on adjacent streets as well. Adjacent streets as well. If you look to the right of the screen, you can see a few of the mobile homes, but on Peachtree, I think there's a couple as you go further, further south.
So there is some mobile homes already?
Right.
That we can't see in this picture?
Correct.
Wait, let me, let me get y'all to put your lights on if y'all can, so we could. Go ahead, Mr. Billiat.
Yes, is there, are there any mobile homes that are not, that are smaller than standard size as this one would apparently have to be?
Well, I don't know the answer to that. I mean, sometimes if you get, say, a double wide, the length isn't quite as, it's not quite as deep. But with a seventy-eight foot, the width is what, seventy-eight? So what they, a typical mobile home is seventy-two, give or take, so they may have to, you know, have the mobile home parallel with the street instead of perpendicular. It, it just, they'll have to shop around and see what they can find. The, the mobile homes that FEMA had provided in their IDA direct housing program were like in the forty-foot range.
Much smaller.
Yeah, so they're out there. That's right, that's right.
Mr., Mr. Billiat, you good? Uh, Mr. Thibodeau?
Yes, sir. With that in mind, based on staff recommendation, I'll offer a motion that we approve per staff recommendation.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Thibodeau. I have a second by Mr. Gold. Mr. Sudier.
I was just wondering, you know, if they had enough space where they, we already have a buffer between the property line and the home. If, uh, you can only put it one way.
Well, I mean, you know, you could recommend a condition, I mean, my recommendation to you is to approve, just as your recommendation, your, your approval is really a recommendation to the council, so you could, you could place some sort of condition on your recommendation that the mobile home be oriented in a certain manner. But I think at this point in time, she's probably not sure what, I don't know if you have a mobile home already purchased somewhere. Do you?
No, sir.
You know, that could be something that, say, the board of adjustment look into, because she's going to have to, if it gets approved, she would have to come back to the board of adjustment for the special exception. Yeah, and oftentimes they, one condition that they usually will place is that the mobile home be of a model year because it's twenty, ten years or newer, right? So they'll say, usually they'll say twenty fifteen or newer. That's just kind of been a longstanding policy that they've had.
And that parish asks for that?
The, the board of adjustment asks, and, and we put it on our recommendation as well, because we just know they're, you know, in most cases. Now, sometimes people get a mobile home and they fix it up themselves, so if they've made a bunch of repairs, I think the intent behind that is so you don't have these rundown mobile homes that just keep being, you know, carried over.
Yeah, I think that's his biggest concern.
Hearing your concern about that, I mean, when she comes back to the board of adjustment, I mean, BJ and I could certainly take that into consideration and.
I was just wondering, because like a, you build a home, you got to be, have a ten-foot buffer from the property line.
Right. For R two, it would have to be five on the sides.
Okay, that's closer to different.
Twenty in the front, twenty-five in the back.
All right.
But what we're saying is, that's what in the staff report, that, that last sentence of that second-to-last paragraph or whatever, it says it may not meet the required setbacks, which would require approval of a structure variance. So when she goes to the board of adjustment, she may very well be asking for both a special exception and a structure variance.
All right.
Can, can the commissioners, can we, do we have the ability to put a certain age on the mobile home as part of her requirement or no?
I mean.
I know you mentioned the ten-year.
I mean, it's possible that R two, like, R two is the zoning she's going for because there's adjacent R two next to it. But what if she changes her mind and just wants to do a duplex or a single-family house and not even a mobile home? I mean, I mean, it's, I don't, I don't recall ever seeing that, but I can assure you that that's something that the board of adjustment routinely does.
Would already take care of.
They've been doing it for years.
I got you. Mr. Thibodeau?
Yeah, Mr. Billiat, or you, did you ask Mr. Billiat to come?
Sure. You come to the mic.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Are, are you adjacent property owner or your home is right next to?
Yeah, I have a house on the corner of Peachtree.
So he's one ninety-nine, which is the house on the very corner. What is that, Tupelo?
Uh, Tupelo and Peachtree. They have one mobile home on Peachtree, well down in the back there to have some, but it's not city limits.
All right. Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to know.
Mr. Rogers?
The other mobile home next door been grandfathered in a long time ago. They got a, the other lot, they can't put a trailer there. He been wanting to do it, he can't do it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Billiat. Mr. Rogers?
So what you're saying, Chris, is there's a twenty-five foot in the back and how, how much in the front?
Twenty in the front.
So that's forty-five and.
That's what I'm saying. More than likely, they're going to have to, they're not going to be able to go perpendicular to the road. They're going to have to be going parallel.
Correct.
And whenever there's a, a shallow lot, you know, what would you prefer? Okay, well, we can meet the front setback, but not the rear. We can meet the rear. We can't meet both.
Right.
We usually will suggest that they stick with the front yard setback and just have a shallow, more shallow rear yard.
Yeah, because if, if you take all the forty-five feet of front and back setback, you, a double wide's not twenty, is how wide's a double wide, twenty-five?
Look at, look at the next two houses down that same side of Peachtree. Look how close they are to the property line. I mean, it all predates zoning. You know, that's why the lots are.
Yeah, they wanted a big backyard. Yeah, one, yeah. One ninety has new.
You know, it almost looks like the old-style family partitions and that Peachtree Street at one point in time may have just been a a servitude of passage and then eventually over time it sort of evolved into a, you know, a street.
You good, Mr. Rogers?
I'm good, thank you.
Ms. Angel?
Um, is it possible for her to go to the board adjustments for the, the size of the mobile home prior to us approving? Or no? Is it, is that backwards?
She could, yeah, no.
Just so.
We have another item on the agenda, not on zoning, but in the planning commission agenda for a subdivision that would, for these existing structures and the result would be that one of the structures would be less than twenty-five feet from the rear property line. So they went to the board of adjustment first, got that setback variance approved and now then they'll be coming to you all on the next meeting. Right, but yeah, the, the, the challenge here is, yeah, I mean, we're talking, the board of adjustments is being asked to rule on a property that technically isn't even zoned R two. So.
So she's got multiple hurdles to jump through besides this one?
Correct.
To get where she's trying to get. Okay.
Right, and even if it does get, the rezone does get approved by the council, that's no guarantee that the board of adjustment will approve the special exception or any setback variances that may, may be required.
Okay, you good, Ms. Angel? Uh, Mr. Derek?
Two things. I just wanted to remind the board, I know there were some alternate motions that were kind of being thrown around. Do you remember? If y'all aren't in those motions, but we currently have one right now to approve, so you'd have to vote on that one first and then, with a second. So you're going to vote on that one first, however, and, you know, obviously if you want a different one, you would need to deny that motion and then recommend the new motion. Yeah, exactly. Also, just for informational purposes, it was mentioned that someone across the street was trying to put a trailer on it and he couldn't, and just for informational purposes for everyone in the crowd, I believe that would probably be because one ninety-six of butts in R two and across the street hypothetically, let's say one ninety-three, that one is completely, I, you know, it's, R one is, all the properties around it, so that would probably be the issue on that one. Just to clarify, so it doesn't seem like we're randomly picking properties that can be R twos, you know, compared to others.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. Derek. All right, we do have a motion by Mr. Thibodeau and we do have a second by Mr. Gold, all approved, aye? All opposed, nay? So motion passes.
So this is a recommendation to the council? So now this will go to the council? Let me say it on the mic. So this will go, this is a recommendation to the council, so this will, from here, go to, be introduced at the council meeting on. She's got the. There you go. So it'll be sometime in late April, early, early May for the hearing, but that'll be, those dates will be in your approval letter.
Thank you.
Thank you. Staff report.
No staff report for zoning.
Commissioner comments? Public comments? Need a motion to adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry. You come back up, sir? I missed your hand.
So like on the property, so I could cut my property in half and move a trailer on it too?
Can you pull, go back to that? Okay, yeah, so the answer would be no, and this is why. In this, in this image, the green, what you see is green, that long lot, that's R two zoning right now. All the yellow is R one zoning. So if you were interested in rezoning your lot, you don't, but you don't adjoining, you're not next to an existing R two lot. You're surrounded by R one on all sides. So the minimum lot size requirement to have a standalone R two district is five acres. Two, two? Okay. Two acres. Okay, two acres. So your property, if, if your property were two acres, then yes, you could request a rezone, but your property is less than two acres, so you're not exempt from that requirement. Whereas Ms. Carter, because she, the property that she has at one ninety-six is adjoining or abutting an existing R two district, it's really considered just an expansion of that district, so she's exempt from the minimum size requirement.
With a quarter, quarter piece, quarter acre she's exempt?
Yeah, so this is why, because she's touching the green and she's right here. And this is R two. See, you're here, everything around you is R one.
How big is your?
She gets the pass because she's touching this.
It's not two acres.
No, sir.
So.
She gets a pass because she's touching right here.
So, Mr. Billiat, like if, for example, if this was also your property or if you were to get with this property owner and if they agreed to be on the application with you, what?
Now, if Ms. Carter's property goes through council and gets rezoned to R two, then he technically after that.
No, the street. No. We had a ruling on that, that the street is the buffer between districts. Because you, you want the street to be the buffer, like in so many instances, you have.
You know who owns that property?
If you turn up to this individual, then you fall in the same category as she does. Then you can't.
I talked to Jules about it years ago.
What about that property? The long green one?
Yeah, this one?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so that's already the R two, which is giving her the pass.
It's not, no, it's not rebutting. It's not.
If this was R two, then you would be able to do it as well.
So the long green pop, property is R two?
It is.
How many mobile homes you could put back there?
Oh, well, okay, well, that's a different, that's a different deal. Like if you, mobile home, you put more than one mobile home, one is fine, two or more constitutes a mobile home park. A mobile home park
R three, right?
is not a permitted use in R two. The most you could ever get on this long lot right here, mobile homes or, or, or traditional frame houses would be two, no more.
So each, each R one, R two, R three just has restrictions to protect everyone around it?
Okay. What if they sell it? And you can divide it?
No, it doesn't matter who owns it.
Okay, yeah.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Billiat. Yes, sir. Any other public comments? Motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Rogers, a second by Mr. Sudier, all approved, aye? All opposed, nay? So motion passes.
It's coming. It's coming.
While we all standing up?
Honor, honor the chairman then.
All right, so we're doing prayer?
So Father God, we just thank you for every person here again, Father God, and we just ask you to continue just to bless Terrebonne. We're so thankful for what you've done in this parish, Father God, and we just ask you to continue to bless us and just protect us, Father God, and the people in this area and just show us your grace and mercy and all through it, Father God, and we just, we just honor you. In Jesus mighty name, we pray, amen.
All right, Ms. Becky, roll call.
Mr. Billiat. Mr. Gold. Mr. Liner.
Here.
Mr. McGuire. Mrs. Poinson. Mr. Rogers. Mr. Smith. Mr. Sudier. Mr. Thibodeau. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Becky. All right, conflict disclosure. I remind the commissioners that anytime tonight a conflict of interest exists, arises, or is recognized as to any issue during this meeting, he or she should immediately disclose it and to recuse himself or herself from participating in debate, discussion, and voting on this matter. Does any member have anything to disclose at this time? All right, D, approval of the minutes of the Homer Terrebonne Regional Planning Commission, minutes for the regular meeting of February twentieth, twenty twenty-five? I have a motion by Mr. Rogers. A second by Mr. McGuire, all approved, aye? All opposed, nay? So motion passes. E.
Approve the remittance, remittance of the payment for the March twentieth, twenty twenty-five invoice and the treasury report of February twenty twenty-five.
I have a motion by Mr. Sudier, a second by Mr. Rogers, all approved, aye? All opposed, nay? So motion passes. Communications.
Pertains to item H six, sent email dated Friday, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Becky, thanks for sharing. Sea levels working with Consolidated Waterworks to get the hydrant installed, but it likely won't be until next week. With that being the case, we would like to request to be pulled from the March meeting and added to the agenda for the four seventeen meeting. Let me know if anything else would be needed from us for this request. Thanks, Matthew Roadree, DDG.
All right. Need a motion?
H six.
I have a motion by Mr. Sudier to table it. I have a second by Mr. Rogers, all approved, aye? All opposed, nay? So motion passes. I need a motion to take G one, A, and B off the table. I'm sorry, G, yeah, G one and two. A motion by Mr. Rogers. A second by Ms. Angel, all approved, aye? All opposed, nay? So motion passes. G one, old business, Bonneville Mobile Home Park, phase two. Yes, sir?
Good evening. Gene Milford, Milford Associates, representing Bonneville Mobile Home Park LLC for Bonneville Mobile Home Park Phase Two. It's taken us a little bit longer than we expected to get here, but it has been constructed with the plans, it's been inspected. All items have been addressed, to my knowledge, and we had asked for a final approval of saying.
Yes, sir. All right, we're going to open it up to the public on this matter. Go on one time. I'm sorry, what? Oh, is this the final? That's not what I'm seeing. Oh, I jumped over, I'm sorry. Okay, administration. Oh, it's Joan, okay. Joan. Hit it again.
We inspected it, it's approved. No punchless.
Staff recommends approval.
All right. Need a motion? That one's easy. A motion, I have a motion by Mr. Rogers. A second by Ms. Angel, all approved. Oppose, nay? Motion passes.
Thank you.
I know. G two, track T two dash one through T dash two dash four, a redivision of track two belonging to Mr. Derwin, one, sir?
Onestall.
Onestall, okay.
Yes, Ken Rembert, six thirty-five School Street, representing Mr. Onestall. We had this tabled, I think, last month. We, we lacked our drainage approval. Had Mr. Milford turned that in and Joan gave us an approval on that and we would like to get this approved.
Yes, sir.
This is, by the way, located in Punishan.
Okay, yes, sir. Yeah, we'll open up to the public on this matter. Public go on one time. Two times public. Three times public on this matter. A motion by Mr. Rogers, a second by Mr. Thibodeau, all approved, aye? All opposed, nay? So motion passes. Administration.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is minor subdivision process D to create four lots for single-family use. Lot configuration and layout meet parish subdivision regulation standards. Terrebonne Parish Engineering has approved the drainage plans and all utility letters have been submitted. Municipal addresses need to be depicted on the plat. Staff recommends approval on the condition municipal addresses are depicted on the plat.
Okay, I need a comment or a motion. Have a, motion by Mr. Soudier and a second by Ms. Angel, all approved, I, all opposed, nay, so motion passes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, H one, track A and remaining, uh, zero point eight two six acres tracks belonging to Mr. David Luke. Yes, sir, name and address.
Uh, David Luke, eighty seven fifty Sherpas Road, Dulac.
All right, just state what you're, what you're doing right here?
What I'm doing is, um, subdividing one side of the property on Homer Nav, I'm keeping that one, the other one side. That's not mine, the other one, but anyway, the other remaining, I'm donating to one of my friends.
Okay, all right, if you just wanna step to the side for a second, I'm gonna open it to the public on this matter, go on one time, public. Two times public. Three times public. Have a motion by Mr. Rogers. Second by Mr. Thibodeau, all approved, I, all opposed, nay, so motion passes, administration.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, this is a minor subdivision process D to create two lots for single family residential use. The lot configuration and layout. Meet parish subdivision regulation standards, drainage calcs are not required, not all utility letters have been submitted, and the vicinity map needs to be corrected. Staff recommends approval on the condition of smittle of all utility letters and correction of the vicinity map.
All right, I need a comment or a motion by Commissioner. I have a motion by Mr. Gold. A second by Mr. Rogers, all approved, I, all opposed, nay, so motion passes. Yes, sir, H two, lots one through eleven, a redivision of property belonging to Mr. Kershaw Land, uh, number ten LLC. Yes, sir?
Yes, Ken Rembert, six thirty-five School Street, uh, representing, uh, the Kershaw family. Uh, this property is located in sixty-five hundred block of, uh, Highway fifty-six down in the Coquetry area. And, uh, they would like to, uh, carve up this property into some campsites. And we have, uh, good letters of utility where, uh, everybody can get served by u- uh, utilities. We had a late, uh, letter that came in from, uh, South Coast AS saying they can serve the development. And we, uh, have since marked the property and put the, uh, uh, addresses on all the lots. And we'd like to see if we could get these, uh, these approved.
Yes, sir.
We do have a good letter from, uh, Board of Health, too.
Awesome, all right, we'll open it up to the public on this matter, anybody public?
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Go ahead, you're good.
We have to ask for, uh, uh, an approval subject to two of the lots that have not been approved with their treatment plans. Uh, I'm sorry for the, uh.
Oh, you're good.
Okay.
So we'll open up to the public, uh, going once on this matter, two times public. Three times public on this matter. I need a motion, have a motion by Mr. Rogers, a second by Ms. Angel, all approved, I, all opposed, nay, so motion passes, administration.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, this is a minor subdivision process D to create eleven lots for single family residential use. The lot configuration and layout meet parish subdivision regulation standards for development. Although the frontage on Lot Six is less than sixty feet, that is Louisiana Department of Health requirement. So staff removed that variance request from the application. The Department of Health has issued a letter noting sewer system issues at sixty-five, sixty-one, and sixty-five, sixty-three, Highway fifty-six. All other utility letters have been submitted, drainage calcs are not required, all public notice requirements have been met. Staff recommends approval on the condition of submitting an approval letter from the Department of Health.
Okay, all right, Commissioner, Mr. Thibodeau.
Yeah, I, I just will make sure I understood what Mr. Rembert just said, that two of the lot did not have approval, is that what?
That, uh, they, they have, uh, board of health issues, two, two of the lots.
Okay, so.
So we were just asking for approval, subject to us getting a good letter from Board of Health.
And that's the recommendation.
In your recommendation?
Yes, sir, that's the same, it's saying the same thing.
Same thing. And, and i- is the variance also being asked here?
We took the variance off the table, it's not necessary, it's not our requirement.
All right.
So if he gets a depo- Department of Letter, Department of Health letter, then obviously they're okay with the frontage.
Okay, so, and since I got the mic, sir, if I'm still up, I'd offer a motion to approve based on staff recommendations.
I have a motion by Mr. Thibodeau, a second by Mr. Soudier, all approved, I, all opposed, nay, so motion passes.
Thank you much.
Yes, sir, all right, H three, lots five A and five B, a redivision of, um, revised Lot Five belonging to Mr. Clark Kane Pertle? Yes, sir?
Pertle, Ken Rembert, uh, representing, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Pertle. Uh, they have a sale for one of their houses and everything is on one lot at this time. So we're trying to divide, uh, this up to, um, separate it from a house they have in the rear, and they wanna sell the front house. We have, uh, you know, the necessary letters from the Board of Health, uh, but we have fire hydrant protection, we have good utility letters, and. Uh, no engineering is needed on this, so we'd like to see about getting, uh, this little subdivision, uh, approved.
Yes, sir, okay, we're gonna open it up to the public, go on one time, public on this matter, two times public, three times public. Have a motion by Mr. Rogers, a second by Ms. Angel, all approved, I, all opposed, nay, so motion passes, administration.
Uh, this is a minor subdivision process D to create two lots for single family residential use. The lot configuration and layout meet parish subdivision regulation standards, all utility letters have been submitted, drainage calcs are not required, staff recommends approval.
Uh, Commissioner, comments or a motion?
I'm moving to approve this for staff recommendation.
I have a motion by Mr. Rogers. A second by Ms. Angel, all approved, I, all opposed, nay, so motion passes. H four, Lot Five dash A and five dash B, a redivision of Lot Five of Block Six, Conley Subdivision, yes, sir?
Yes, uh, Ken Rembert, six thirty-five School Street here in town, uh, representing, uh, Louisiana Realty Development. They have a, a lot right there that has two, two, uh, dwellings on them, on the lot. And, uh, we're trying to carve it into two lots, one of which is a very small lot. Um, they having trouble selling the, the houses because it's two houses on one lot, and. The bank, uh, is reluctant to loan things, uh, like that, so they would like to separate the two, and. We've thrown a little property line around one of them, it's rather small, uh, but we did present it to the. Uh, Board of Adjustment, uh, a few nights ago, and, uh, they approved it, uh, we, the setbacks are somewhat smaller than what they'd like to have. And of course, what we're asking for is, uh, a variance from the lot size, because we can't possibly make the six thousand square foot. In lot size, so this is located just across the intra-coastal on, uh, on Ash Street. And, uh, we have fire hydrant protection and, uh, good utility letters, no engineering is needed. And we would like to see about getting this approved, if it's, if we can get the variance.
Yes, sir, all right, we'll open it up to the public on this matter, go on one time, public. All right, two times public, three times public, motion to close. I have a motion by Mr. Rogers. Second by Mr. McGuire, all approved, I, all opposed, nay, so motion passes, administration.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, this is a redivision of Lot Five into Lots Five A and Five B. Including a variance from the twenty-five foot minimum frontage to ten feet for Lot Five A. And the six thousand square foot minimum lot size for Lots Five A and Five B, in order to place. Existing single family residences on separate lots of record. As this is a redivision, drainage calcs and utility letters are not required. Lending institutions and insurance companies have begun requiring separate dwelling units be placed on separate lots. This is an older area of town that predates zoning, so there are a lot of smaller lots, small lots and similar variances. Have been granted in the past, but not to, not quite to this size. Uh, the applicant was able to obtain a rear yard setback variance for Lot Five B from the Board of Adjustment at their March seventeenth meeting. The minimum frontage on proposed Lot Five A is sufficient to encompass the existing driveway and walkway to the house. The redivision also includes placement of a sewer servitude for maintenance and repairs to the existing sewer line in favor of both lots. Staff received no calls regarding the request, staff recommends approval of the variances. And approval of the redivision on the condition that the w- wording minor subdivision be changed to redivision. I'm talking about in the title block in the lower right corner.
Is that it, Chris?
That's it.
Okay, all right, I need a Commissioner comment or a motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve with the, uh, staff recommendations of the variances and of the redivision.
A motion by Mr. Rogers. Uh, second by Mr. Billiot, all approved, I, all opposed, nay. So motion passes.
Thank you so much.
H five, tracks A, H, I, J, K, B, A, and A, B, C, D, E, F, G, A. Property, uh, possessed by Ms. Pamela A Bear. Yes, sir?
Prosper Tupe's Delta Coast Consultants, six thirty-one South Hollywood Road. Uh, Ms. Pamela A Bear owns a lot on Brady Road toward, uh, toward the end of, uh, DuLarge. They're gonna try to sell, uh, the side on the Bayeux DuLarge side of Brady Road. And they would like to keep the, the side on the opposite, the west side of Brady Road, in case you wanna go fishing or something like that.
Got it.
It meets size requirements, there's a fire hydrant, um, meets the roadway, um, size. And, um, I think we've got most of the utility letters, I'm not sure if we have them all, um. And we're asking for approval to subdivide.
Yes, sir, we'll open it up to the public on this matter, one time, public, two times, public. Three times, public, motion to close. I have a motion by Mr. Soudier, a second by Mr. Rogers, all approved, I, all opposed, nay, so motion passes, administration.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, this is a minor subdivision process D. To create two lots for single family residential use as campsites. The lot configuration and layout meet parish subdivision regulation standards for development. Drainage calcs are not required, there appears to be a fire hydrant located south of the subject property and within two hundred and fifty feet. But it's not depicted on the plat, municipal addresses need to be depicted on the plat, not all the utility letters have been submitted. And the method of sewage disposal needs to be depicted on the plat, so staff recommends approval on the following conditions. Submittal of all utility letters, municipal addresses depicted on the plat, method of sewage disposal depicted on the plat. And confir- confirmation, or confirm location of the fire hydrant within two hundred and fifty feet and depicted on the plat. And actually, the aerial photo, there you go, that's not on the one I have in my, in my file. But there it is. And it's also on that aerial photo, there's a little red crosshairs, yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's it.
Okay, so, uh, Commissioner comments or a motion? I have a motion by Mr. Gold. A second by Mr. Rogers, all approved, I, all opposed, nay, so motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
God bless America.
Yes, sir, staff report.
Oh, yeah, okay, never mind. Uh, yes, so, a couple of things. Um, first, we have our annual report, which we will have to bring back to you all next month. We just didn't get a chance to finish it, um, so we'll get that to you all. Obviously, in advance of next month's meeting, so you have time to review it and digest it, process it, whatever. You have any questions about that?
No, sir.
Okay, um, is there another one, another slide? Okay, so the file cabinet, we discussed this at the last meeting, um, so, uh, we have some. You know, I have a quote, so you can see, you know, what we're looking at, uh, the con- state contract price is, uh. Forty-six, four thousand six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents, so after taxes, well, shipping. No, that would be it, just the forty-six hundred. That's right, yeah, that's why we were trying to get it in, to save a little money.
Cost goes up.
Ca- everything goes up, so, um, we're just looking for. Yeah. They're really nice, I mean, there's a, those foot pedals down at the bottom of the picture, step on those and the whole unit. It, yeah, spins around, so you, you get a lot of storage space in a small area. We have lots of them, and we're digitizing them all.
Ms. Thibodeau?
Yes, sir, I'd like to offer a motion to approve the purchase of the item presented by the Director of Planning.
I have a motion by Mr. Thibodeau, a second by Mr. Billiot, all approved, I, all opposed, nay, so motion passes.
We'll call you when it comes in and we can have a put it together party. Bring your, bring your Phillips head, your patience.
Right.
Even better.
Yeah, that's right.
Bring cookies.
Administrative approvals, J.
I'm gonna move, uh, J, one through five.
Motion by Mr. Rogers. Second by Mr. Thibodeau, all approved, I, all opposed, nay, so motion passes, K, committee report.
So the subdivision regulation review committee, um, we did meet, uh, last week, um, as you recall, last month, we were. Discussing, um, everything from RV park regulations and tiny houses and zoning versus subdivision covenants. Um, so we had about, I think, maybe five or six people from the public show up. Um, and they were mainly from the area surrounding the FEMA group site on Water Plant Road. And their main concern was what's happening with that property. Now that the group sites closed down and that program has shut down, their fear was that the. Uh, landowners were, uh, going to leave that infrastructure in place and try and open either a mobile home park or an RV park. Or something to that effect, um, I, uh, mentioned to them that, uh. Parish President Bergeron did send a letter to FEMA on March tenth. Um, requesting that they honor their statements that they had made early on at the beginning of that program, that. Those sites, both the one in Shreve, off of Water Plant Road, and the one in Bayeux Blue off of Gage Court, would be. Returned to their pre-storm conditions, um, and I mentioned to them that if the desire of that landowner would be to. Convert the property into a mobile home park. That he or she would have to go through that whole process, which is, you know, coming to you all. Um, RV park regulations, though, as we discussed last time, we don't have any, really. So Becky had, um, gone in and pulled up the RV park regulations from two thousand and fourteen, the draft regulations. From two thousand and fourteen, and they were pretty much mimicking. The mobile home park regulations that were being drafted at the same time, in fact, in most instances. It was mobile home park and or RV park, and what happened at that time was the council had. Basically requested or said that we'll approve the mobile home park side of things, but not the RV park, so. Basically, they went through and just struck out all the references to RV parks, and that's what went back to the council for approval and. Became codified, so, uh, Becky had distributed that to the, um. Committee members with the understanding that between now and the next subdivision regulation review committee. That they'll have, they'll be able to, um, you know, review it, get familiar with it, and then. We'll start talking, you know, about specifics, about what we wanna do. That's, that's pretty much it.
Ms. Thibodeau?
Yeah, so. Did you help put the dual? RV and, and, uh?
Jeff Large was doing that with Pat.
Jeff Large was doing that with Pat back in those days. I mean, I was on staff at the time, but that was all, that was handled by Jeff and Pat.
Or you believe in they should be the same?
I mean, I'm not so sure about the. I mean, yeah, I mean, an RV park with curb and gutter streets is nice, but most of the time RV parks are a little more rustic. I just think as long as they have adequate drainage and so forth, I'd like to see buffers, you know, around the perimeter and stuff like that. And also talk about, you know, surrounding land uses. I mean, I know it's not zoned, so we have to be mindful of that. But we need to watch that we don't end up with miles and miles of RV parks.
Does that cover the situation with the tiny houses? Does that?
Well, not exactly, because that's the tiny house phenomenon or whatever. Is really more of a building code thing. They're not, they don't meet building code standards, they don't meet HUD standards, and they don't meet DMV standards. They're none of the above. The only way right now, a tiny house, park model, RV, whatever you wanna. Whatever term you use to call it, would be allowed in Terrebonne Parish is if the person looking to place it. Signs the Act twelve camp affidavit and basically attesting that it's only for recreational use. It's not a primary residence. So they would, okay, so I wanna open up one of those parks and I wanna put a hundred of them out. So I would have to do a hundred of those affidavits. And then I would have to come to you all for residential building park approval. Cause it's still a residential building park. So you have, you know, street, hard surface, street requirements. You've got, it's very similar to a mobile home park. That's the only way those park model type tiny houses would be allowed. Now, it doesn't mean that somebody couldn't go build a very small house to IBC.
Sure.
Standards.
What's going on with the one that we dealt with last month? What's the latest on that one?
So they have provided a little bit more documentation. But we're still waiting for the official stamp of, yes, this is a IBC certified from the manufacturer. And then that and an elevation, final elevation certificate. But, I mean, it's just, if they're able to get it, then there's, that's it. It's done.
You're good, Mr. Thibodeau?
Yeah, you know, and I know you declared that they don't meet HUD or other building standards. But I was looking a little farther into that and some of the buildings that I've seen, especially the ones that are tough you built. The wind loads are good. They exceed in some cases the mobile home wind loads. And, and I, you know, I don't know, I think an argu- argument may be made for a developer. On a planned unit developer to put up a hundred of those somewhere in a subdivision land that he owns, in the rural area especially.
You're right. I mean, the tough sheds, often, a lot of them do meet wind load requirements. But when you step inside of it, you realize what it really is, and that's a storage shed. So there's other code requirements that go along with it to make it a residence.
Yeah, you have to build it out. I mean.
Yes. So, so they would, they would get it and they could take that park model unit. And with enough renovations to it, it could be then inspected and become an IBC compliant structure. Yes, that's another route to go.
The only thing I see in those units that they get away with on is the foundation. They really don't have a foundation plan as far as the concrete and the footing underneath it. Like you do when you need a module home or a mobile home or stick build.
So even those structures that they sign camp affidavits on, still, even though they're exempt from building code. Plan review and inspections, they still have to meet base flood elevation requirements. So they still have to be elevated. But, yeah, I mean, as far as the structures themselves. I mean, it's, it's, it's a big workaround, but unfortunately, our state legislature allowed that to happen.
So I could tell you.
I wouldn't wanna have one of those next to me.
I could tell you how it could be fixed, because you don't need an engineered stamp on those sheds. If we required an engineered stamp on those sheds, the engineer would have to, the foundation would have to, have to be drawn up. And I think that would fix some of that issue.
I think the foundation on those things still have to be stamped. How are you, like, we need an engineer to stamp how it's anchored.
Correct.
The manufacturer provides the information on the shed for wind load requirements and how it's built and stuff. And as long as it's being used as a storage shed and they're not trying to live in it.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, it's not just the anchoring, it's what it's anchoring to.
Right. If you have an existing slab. In your backyard and you wanna, I got a twenty by twenty slab, oh, great, let me just go pick up one of those tough sheds and stick it on there. Well, before that, you gotta have an engineer stamp the foundation to show how it's anchored. So in doing so, they're also attesting to the slab itself. Now, some engineers may go a little deeper into it than others, but it's the engineer taking, taking that responsibility.
Okay, cause I have seen scenarios and situations where the concrete was there, it was four inches thick and they were, right, they were fastened into the concrete. But the concrete itself wasn't approved.
Yeah, and then the whole thing just.
Right.
It's over in a big wind. The bolts stay intact, but the slab just gets.
Yeah, it just cracks off. That's, I have seen that, so I don't know how they got around it, but, okay. Where are we at?
So we'll be meeting again, I don't, we picked a date, didn't we? Sixteenth. Ten. There you go.
You good, Chris?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner comments? Public comments? Motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Sudier, a second by Mr. Rogers. All approved? Aye. All opposed? Nay. So motion passes.